Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. President, members of the council, thanks for having us today to talk about the proposed FY20 budget for recreation parks tourism. As you know, our mission is quality of life is our focus and before getting into the FY20 budget, I just wanted to take a moment to thank the council for your support in this current fiscal year and all the various accomplishments that we've been able to achieve. Our department every year runs over a thousand different events and programs and in addition to that, this year, we're very pleased to complete the 360 deck over at Purdue Stadium. We received funding and made significant progress this year on the development of Pirates Warf into a regional park. We replaced five playgrounds, four basketball courts in our park system. This year, we launched a youth basketball program that had over 230 kids in our first year, which we were thrilled about and we received national recognition for many tourism events, including the Governor's Challenge, U triple A World Series, among many other things. So, we could not do that without council support. We do thank you for your support in that. One thing I will tell you that I'm proud of, when this council gives us funding, I'm very proud of the fact that we're able to get things done with that. The projects don't sit. We've been able to advance many projects and I'm proud of that and that's a testament to the folks sitting next to me and also behind me, who I'm very proud to work with and to be associated with. And looking ahead to FY20, we're going to continue to have an ambitious agenda in terms of the normal stuff that we do, but also additional things in terms of programming and facility improvements. Some of those highlights include the development of Field Seven and a Half at the Parker Complex, which we're excited about, shoreline restoration projects at Roaring Point and Cove Road. We're going to be replacing a boat ramp at Riverside Boat Ramp. We have a number of exterior and safety improvements that we'd like to make at the Youth and Civic Center. We'll have a Phase Two parking lot that, which will be done this coming year at Shoemaker Park, which has been needed to get done for many years, among many, many other projects. So, we have an ambitious agenda. We like to get things done and we look forward to doing that. With that, we've given brief highlights of our three respective budgets, Recreation Parks, Tourism Civic Center. We'd be happy to go in any direction that you'd like. Staff are here to be able to answer any questions and with that, I thank you and for the opportunity. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
Well, Steve, one thing you said that I like to hear is the projects completed and the success that you've had, so thank you for keeping those projects moving.
I appreciate that.
I was at the Short Birds game yesterday morning along with the other, I think about five thousand, ten thousand, whatever it was, kids that Ernie brought there and dropped off. But, uh, but, uh, just need to see things like that for our county.
Yeah.
So, with the minimum wage increase, obviously, you know, for like your summer camps and things like that, that's going to impact you guys? Have you got, you know, is that, is that being phased in in this coming year?
Yeah, the first impact, if I know the law appropriately, it starts January first and it goes from 10:10 to 11:00, I believe is the first phase. We did put that impact in our part-time rates that are listed in this budget. We did a quick check and none, I don't believe any of our full-timer impacted this go-around from the 10:10 to 11:00. So, there aren't any wage increases that are different than the rest of the county's proposed raise. But we did quickly at the very end throw in an estimate for what 10:10 to 11:00 would do to our part-time numbers across all three.
Technically, the full-time employees are affected if they don't get moved up.
Right. Well, in terms of, you mentioned recreation programs like camps and those things. So, we did not propose increases for those programs for this year. I think that is something that we will have to look at in future years as that continues to climb. It's certainly going to impact us on the recreation end.
Now, we again did not propose any increases. We did propose a couple decreases to our program. It's not list, it, they're decreases, so we did not attach that rate schedule to this budget. But there, and the reason we propose a decre, sorry, decreases is because there's a shortening of a season on one of the programs, so we didn't feel it was appropriate to still charge at the level that we were previously charging at. So, that is not attached to this budget, but it would be implemented on July first. So, we wouldn't be charging more than what you guys have already previously approved.
Yeah, the question, the, um, did you, was the Happy Timers program, is that sort of phased out or what?
No, it has changed. We, we have made the decision to move several programs that had previously been listed under our operating budget for wreck and parks, under their own separate account in what we call the program section. So, they all have a program number of 78 at the end.
Right.
So, we moved them out of the line. The two main ones that moved, actually, three moved. We moved Happy Timers. They now have their own account back in the 78 section. We moved the Summer Clubhouse program, which was, is the free, we're changing that program up and we've moved that from there to a 78, which was what we ran out of like Doverdale and I'm liking on the other park.
Oh, Indian Village.
Indian Village. And then we moved the basketball program that had been the drop-in basketball. These were all things that didn't, that don't bring in revenue that per se, but they, we moved them to the program account because we, we view them as separate programs. So, we've cleaned up the operating sec, what we call the operating section of the budget and have assigned them their own line items so that we can track them better.
But we do still host that program at Civic Center with Happy Timer.
So, if you're running programs at Doverdale, doesn't the city have their own wrecks and parks?
Yeah, so we've traditionally done, and as Pam noted, we're actually changing that up this year. There was traditionally a drop-in program that the county would be involved with, so we're moving away from that actually to drop-in. We found over the years, it was a struggle with attendance, it was a struggle as kids kind of come and go, there's a free flow to it.
We'll discuss that later, I think.
Yeah, and through our Wreck and Parks Commission, what we've moved to this summer, instead of doing that drop-in program, we're going to actually do a, um, event series, a special event series, so we're going to go into the different neighborhoods, still bring activities to them, but, but that daytime, you know, there were a lot of flaws with it, but, but you've got 95-degree day, there's no indoor option, kids are out there for six hours, kind of sweltering, they come and go. It was a, I think, I think honestly, a program for a different era that worked, I think, many years ago, but I think as we move forward, we're going to, we're going to attempt to try that event series this summer and see how that goes. And we've gotten very positive reaction from those neighborhoods and, I'm sorry?
The four iPhones.
Yeah, yeah. A lot, yeah, a lot has changed. And so, we're trying to adapt to meet the needs and still be involved and provide a service in those communities, but...
What kind of events?
It'll be various event, I mean, they'll have bounce house type events, different themes for, for each of the, I think it's a series of eight events. So, it'd be family-oriented activities, food. James, what else we got?
Steamed every week, so anything from nature with like youth fishing derby incorporated into kayaking, that kind of a thing. The STEM or STEAM program now, trying to get into sciences, ours, it's, it's based around a lot of that that they're learning about throughout the year, but then free family activities that they can enjoy together.
And it rotates around parks, so it's not at one park all summer. We're rotating it around different parks for the, the eight different, I think it's, I think we repeat each park once.
Now, is it exclusive to the, the area of the park?
It's open to anybody who would like to attend.
Okay.
The other thing I had too, and again, this is probably same as Happy Timers, is I like, I just look for anomalies sometimes because it's the best thing I can try to do to figure out. And I saw that, I guess, the, um, the youth softball tournaments, you're investing more in that?
Yep. You'll notice that if you look at the, the last five digits, that project number, the expense goes up, but if you go to the revenue line item, the revenue goes up, so...
I missed that.
So, we're not just...
John, we lose the expenses.
So, that one is one where both sides are increasing. We have seen growth in our youth, in our softball events out at Parker Complex, and so both of those lines are going up, so we're obviously anticipating expenses to go up with the revenues.
Well, plus that, that revenue impact is many fold to the community, you know, outside of just what the impact is directly to parks.
Correct. So, yeah, but it, it's hard with our budget to look at it the way Munus prints it out because of the fact that we've got all those projects. We, we do look at it with an Excel spreadsheet that looks at each of those projects as a finite section to go matching up the revenue with those expenses because that shows the picture of what we're doing with each program.
The events are evidently becoming more popular all the time. I was out there for, I think the comptroller was in town and you were out there. And on the way to the ball field for the whole photo thing, there was a family like sitting in the shade and I thought, well, they looked, I said, well, I guess I'll ask, you know, I'll just say hello. I said, how do you like it? And they were from New Jersey. Well, first of all, if you look at the parking lot, there's probably eight different states, license plates, you know, eight, from eight different states at least. And I said, how do you like it? They, oh, and they just loved it, you know, they said, it's great here, we like it, we travel everywhere, but this is our favorite place and it was good to hear all that, you know?
That's great, yeah, I appreciate that.
That was great.
What was the baseball tournament out there this weekend? Well, I rode through there on Sunday and I noticed some out-of-state cars and it looked like several of the fields in the back, the new fields.
Fruit and force.
Fruit and force, okay.
Yeah.
But there were some out-of-state tags, so it's nice to see people coming to our county.
Absolutely.
And I noticed in switching to like Pirates Warf, there was a 25,000 for archaeological fund.
Yeah, so we're, we are applying through MHT, we're applying for a grant to do archaeological services, so we're anticipating, we're, we're doing an environmental assessment right now and we'll probably get the results of that soon, certainly by the summer. And we're anticipating that they're going to require, because we, we've received the federal funding, that they're going to require some type of archaeological Phase One.
Okay.
And so, MHT would, has funding for that, so we're, we're intending to apply for that. We hope that will help just pay for those services, whatever is required.
You know, if you find a dinosaur, it's going to shut the whole project.
I know. It'll be a dinosaur park, that's my plan.
Change the name.
Yeah, we certainly, we'll cross that bridge, I suppose.
Let's hope we do, yeah.
Yeah.
The only other thing I had was I was curious as to, and this could apply to all, you know, recreation parks and tourism, the leasing. How many vehicles are you planning to lease in each area?
Um, we are not planning, tourism, with the leasing that we're doing this year for Wreck and Parks, we are not planning to lease any new ones for Wreck and Parks. Two of their vehicles are shifting. One is going to tourism and one is going to Civic Center. With that move to tourism, tourism's fleet then becomes relatively new, less than five years old, I think, for, or right at five years old for the two vehicles that they have. So, tourism is not planning to lease anything. Civic Center, we're looking to lease two vehicles and we're looking to change one of the vehicles up to be a box truck so that we have the ability with our catering stuff to just kind of load on and load off. Right now, we try to move it around in pickup trucks and that becomes difficult, even just around our property, going from one side to the other sometimes. So, we're looking at changing up one of our vehicles to be a box truck and I think the other...
With a lift on it?
Um, I think we're just doing a ramp, but either way, it's still more conducive to what we do than trying to load catering stuff uncovered onto the back of a pickup truck. And honestly, price-wise, it's very similar. And then I think we're replacing the other, I have to go to that, I can't remember, went off the top of my head.
Is that a part of the, the 110,000 leasing that's in Wreck and Parks?
No, they have their own line in Civic Center. Civic Center has a line in theirs, um, sorry, I have to put these on.
So, we all do.
Um, we have a line for capital leasing in Civic Center. It's on page 249 of what your budget document is, the printed-out budget document. There's a line of 16,000 to 16,000 and that's two vehicles. So, the vehicles that you see in that 110 is the second-year payment for the parks and wreck. So, on this, in the Fund 60, we've already, we will be leasing all of those in this fiscal year and we're not adding any new ones.
I'm looking at page 239, that's the bottom.
Okay.
It's under capital expenses in Wreck and Parks. That's the 110.
Yep, that 110 is vehicles that we lease this fiscal year, fiscal 19.
Right.
And so, then that's the second-year payment.
Oh, other words, so it doesn't show up in the fiscal 19 because we added it in 19 regardless?
Well, yeah, and 19 was listed, we started in 19, we thought we were going to purchase like five.
I understand.
We changed in the middle of the year to be a leasing product and we were able to actually upgrade most of our fleet. So, that actually is why we're not leasing anything new. That is the second-year payment of what we leased starting in 19.
And that's how many vehicles?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, thanks, okay. That's why you have backup.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm just trying to keep, and you know, I don't know if it's ever going to, you know, come to anything, you know, one way or the other, but I'm just trying to see where we are with vehicle leases as opposed to, you know, whether, what's, what's more fiscally, what's more economical, whether or not you lease your...
Right. Well, we were able to go from, from five vehicles with the amount of money that we had last year to leasing 14 and pretty much upgrading then our whole fleet for Wreck and Parks last year.
Yeah, which is, I understand that.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, Sheriff's Department's the same thing, instead of coming here and asking for eight cars or 10 cars and hoping they can get them, you know, then they get, they get 33 from a leasing program.
Yep.
But again, I, my concerns is, what is that really? What true expense is that to the taxpayer long-term?
Yep.
Because, and these guys are probably sick of hearing me say it, I've, I've just always found that leasing has never been as financially beneficial as purchasing.
Well, it's very, very different from an individual compared to when you have fleets like the Sheriff's Department and, and wrecks and so forth, you know, because, I mean, you know, they're depreciable assets. They're not, they're not gaining value and, you know, from a capital standpoint, you know, it just doesn't make sense a lot of the time.
Well, it'll be interesting, honestly, to us as well because they're supposed to let us know if in like three years, they can economically get us another 14 and still sell these for a value that then puts money back in that offsets the new payments going forward.
Sure.
So, we're sort of wondering that same thing ourselves, but it did, it did take some really, really old fleet off of our books.
And, and I think that's like the shot in the arm that we kind of needed. I think that's what the Sheriff's Department needed, good or bad. I think it's like, let's get these in there right now, because I know, I know what, what vehicles you guys were driving.
Yeah, we had some...
That's some old stuff.
We had some very old stuff and so, as I said, we're taking ones that historically we would have held on for another 10 years, we, we're moving two of those where it made sense to be the backup at tourism and be a backup at Civic Center. We're taking really, really old Civic Center ones off the table and not having to pay for a lease with those as well. So, we are trying to economically look at what we can move around.
I see, yeah. Steve, I couldn't find it in the budget. I think you all, you're all just kind of spread across numerous pages here. What's, where's the revenue from Purdue Stadium, the amusement tax or the payment from Seventh Inning Stretch? Where's that accounted for?
Oh, that doesn't show up in our budget.
Okay.
Yeah, that, I think that is a general fund.
Just, just general revenue?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, we, we have never seen that in our budget. And I will go back to Pirates Warf if I might. June 17th is the date, I'll, I'll send this to Mrs. Hurley, but we're going to do a public meeting to unveil kind of the draft of the master plan. And that, that has just been announced. We were trying to work through vacation schedules and trying to coordinate that, but we're going to host that in the evening at the Civic Center, so just in time for Mr. Kilmer to, to not be here, right?
John will go in my place.
He'll, he'll, he'll stick around for that.
We hope, we hope you do.
At least see, see what's going to come.
Yeah, I'll, I'll keep following it.
Good, good, we hope you do.
Live streaming.
There you go.
Any other questions for me? Did you, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, no. I think the other vehicle at the Civic Center was a van with a box truck, that would have been the only...
Okay, I hadn't flipped that far enough, sorry.
That's okay, I just, that's fine, I just didn't, I wasn't sure about the, the Wreck and Parks bit there, but that's okay. Anything else, Steve?
Nothing.
All right, you guys are doing great work.
Thanks, thanks for helping.
Thank you.
And good luck too.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Not that I'll know how to see them together, but good luck.
It's been good work.
How you doing?
I'm done.
You're doing all right.
Florida's a pretty good...
I've got it, we're timed.
Huh?
Sam, tell him we're still, I will do that.
Not as confident as I like.
Hey, Paul Taylor.
Bye, thank you.
The next item on the work session agenda is the budget recap session, which was supposed to include discussion with administration as far as, you know, questions we might have overall, in addition to the Executive's Office, I would, I would guess, but we learned this morning that the, that the Executive instructed Weston Young not to, not to be present today. We don't have an explanation for that, we just know that Mr. Young came in today and said he was instructed not to attend our work session today.
Do you think that has anything to do with the email that went out yesterday about us not talking to county employees?
Don't know, never quite sure of the motive, but that's where we are, so if there's any council wants to review, unfortunately, if there are particular questions you may have had, you know, regarding OPEB or stipends or anything else, we're, we're going to have to work this out on our own.
Wow.
And, but there's still items we can, we can review independently.
You can still cut the budget.
I agree. I agree.
You know, you know, in the past, it's been helpful, sometimes we've had suggestions about cuts and they've said, well, you know, maybe this shouldn't be or that shouldn't be, but I guess they forfeited that opportunity to...
It worked, really, and that's, yeah, well, it's just like today in asking Steve and Pam, you know, why do you have this expense increase? It's nice to know, you know, why it's there.
Even I in the past, who likes to cut budgets, have been dissuaded from some budget cuts, but it's, that is actually needed, so it's, it's useful to have them here, but...
Where would we like to start, gentlemen?
Well, just, I'll just make a quick comment. You know, we, you know, we've talked to the departments that we've had here and so forth. The, uh, one thing that appears to be good about the budget that we have, and I, and I'm also saying this, I haven't heard anything from other council members, in terms of anything that's very, that's, you know, real glaring issue, you know, you know, we've seen, you know, some small things here and there, but the, you know, obviously in our budget, the two major things are always education and public safety, you know. Once you move past that, now we're only talking about not even probably 20% of our budget once you add those two things together.
Right.
But the fact that both of those are fully funded, you know, you know, I think there's somewhat consensus on the council that we're not doing anything with those two budgets. The others, you know, the meetings we've had with people, you know, nothing's come to the surface, it's a major concern, so I kind of, I'm, I'm saying that because it kind of gets to the issue of, yeah, how much do we want to micro-manage these smaller departments and that also in the face of, just to be real frank, you know, we, the county's not getting the best publicity as we sit here today. You know, and how, whatever the root cause of that is, you know, that's not the point, but it's just the fact, you know, it is what it is. You know, I'd like to kind of see is, you know, the quicker, I think, I think the quicker we can move forward with the budget and, you know, and even possibly approve it as it is and move on.
Yeah, I, yeah, I agree. Still, I think it's, uh, it's our responsibility to try to evaluate what, what there might be, be it only 20% of the budget.
Well, I'm not saying, yeah, I'm not saying we ignore anything, but I mean, unless, unless somebody's got something that's glaring, you know, I don't think we need a mega special effort just to try to move something because we can.
Well, I, I do think that, you know, when Dallas was here, he talked about, I guess they didn't put money in for flood issues, you know, and he hinted, he didn't quite say it, so I don't want to, you know, say that he implied anything, but, you know, he said, well, we weren't counting on getting money from you guys this year, you know, but it would be nice to be able to, you know, they are using the money that we cut from certain areas last year on flooding issues this year. So, you know, if we could find some money to do that again this year, I certainly wouldn't be opposed, you know, to recommend that.
Dallas also sat here and said, I'm good.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know...
He's the department head, he said he's good.
Yeah, but, you know...
When he says he's good, I'm marking him off and I'm moving on.
Well, they, they all said they're good.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's a little hard for them to come in here when they know who they work for and disagree with that person that gave them the budget, so...
Well, I don't know, historically, to come here and say, here, I need this.
Yeah. You know, I'm, go ahead, Mark.
No, go ahead.
I, I'm upset that, you know, the money was cut out of roads. We hear, I hear, and I don't know about the rest of the council, I'm sure some of you do, that's what I hear about. I don't hear people coming in and complaining about the airport or coming in and complaining about this, this area or that area, but the complaints I get is complaints about the condition of our roads, not just necessarily the paving, but the trees hanging over. You know, I've been riding around on the east side, the, the grass isn't getting cut alongside the roads like it should be. And then you talk to Dallas and, and the other folks over there and they say, well, you know, we can't, we can't hire people. You know, and that, you know, the hiring situation is bad everywhere. Economy's good, people are hiring, so we have to be competitive. People used to come to work to the county because their benefits were good, even if the pay wasn't as good, they were happy with their benefits and apparently now there's some issues with that, you know, questions that, you know, it started off with cutting the retirees' healthcare as far as their prescriptions go, and I think it's starting to trickle down, you know, through the, through the employees, so it's a little hard, it's a little hard to hire people. And most county employees, especially on the roads, I'd say in the roads, most of those folks come from people saying, hey, they're looking for somebody at the county or my cousin needs a job, he came to work for the county or, or whatever, so I don't know whether, we can't put money back in roads, we're not allowed to, but we can sure make the suggestion. And in the past couple of years, we have heard nothing but about the flooding, like Mark just mentioned, and I find that, that we're cutting this money out of roads is, is pretty drastic. We've heard from the county Executive's Office, especially from Wayne, recently, you know, about the $7 million that the state cut out of roads and that's, you know, been the big excuse all these years, you know, the state cut us $7 million. So, we turn around and look and now the county's cutting almost a million dollars out of roads. It don't make a lot of sense, so I, like I say, we can't make, make the money go back into roads, but we can sure suggest it and then if we can find cuts somewhere else, I think it would be beneficial.
Any other comments? Josh?
Oh, yeah, I would just add to that, as kind of a side note of all of us, is that I did run into Pat Tingle with MAC recently and she, I don't know if you, you guys have seen this yet or heard about it yet, but apparently the State of Maryland just let them know that they're cutting a, a lot of their Meals on Wheels stuff, they're cutting the program in half. Locally, we're going to see 15,000 fewer meals delivered and they're the, or they're one of the only services that do so, which may not be something that we can immediately address here in this, per se, but, you know, maybe that's, maybe a helpful thing is just for us to do a letter, at least at a minimum, but that's, of course, that is jobs cut in our area for them. So, I would, did, wanted to bring that up, see you on that.
I got that email yesterday, too.
I got two of the email, but although there is an executive that suggested an increase in the budget for MAC, I mean, that's 10,000. It's 10,000 over last year, so I mean, I honestly make that up, but that...
Yeah.
And I had a question too earlier, I'd asked, remember, John, we were talking about this, I'd asked you, but if you remembered, but in the first public hearing when the budget was submitted... was submitted for the public, I remember two of the library trustees spoke about, I remember the amount, the $77,000 they were asking to be added back to their budget that had been cut, but I hadn't heard anything since then, but they both spoke at the initial public hearing, and I don't know if that got subsequently put back, Laura, I don't know if you know that or not, if it got subsequently.
I'm not familiar with that at all.
Yeah, because I know they got cut a couple of years, I know, because I know the issue with the, what went on with the director and everything and so forth, but now we have a new director, but anyhow, but I know, I just know they spoke at the public hearing about that.
Is, I'm on the library, you know, board, but I think, I recall, and we'll need to look this up, I think that they got level funded again this year, like last year.
Right.
Part of the issue, though, is their healthcare costs, you know, much like the county, continues to go up, and so, you know, essentially, they're having to cut from other areas to fill in for the healthcare costs, and so, you know, obviously, if they got more money, they could, you know.
Was it two years ago, they go, they lost that, they specifically, I remember the number was 77s, I wrote it down at the meeting.
Well, it's, um.
And then they got, and I think they've been level funded ever since.
Yeah, it's been level funded, I'm not sure, and I don't know if it's been cut the past couple of years, I think it's been more and more or less level funded, but their costs are increasing essentially, is kind of what the issue is, and, you know, that's not being reflected in the county share. We provided a little bit more money last year, the council cut from elsewhere, and gave the library a little bit extra to help make up, to help give the employees a raise on par with the county.
Except I think we want to keep that on our radar as we talk about, you know, because level, level funding for them, obviously, that's a struggle for anybody, if they're just consistently level funding.
Well, part of that is also that they, you know, they, they get state funding as well. Now, the state funding was very minimal, I think, it went up about 100,000, which puts in a whole lot in light of their entire budget. But the library is, is a combination of getting funding from the state as well as from the county.
Yeah, no, I mean, I mean, the library funding, their operating grants have gone up ever since 16, but it's been level funded this, you know, there was a little bit of an increase last year thanks to the council, and then it's level funded for this year, but I think it's, they're increasing, you know, healthcare costs and things like that are the issue, but, but look, Bill, if you want to cut somewhere else in the budget, put the library, I'd support you on that, so.
Well, yeah, yeah. The only one that I saw that frankly gave me any concerns, you know, they're not big numbers, but, you know, we had Anthony here yesterday, or Tuesday, but, you know, there are, there are some pretty nebulous items in their budget, I mean, I know that they're legal, they had increased it from.
Went from about 3 to 35.
Yeah, yeah, right, you know, and his explanation, I mean, and obviously they're going to need, because of the upcoming election, you know, they're going to need some more legal money, but there wasn't a whole lot of support necessarily, you know, okay, it was 30, it could have been, it could have been 30, it could have been 25, I mean, it was kind of, I would say, pretty arbitrary.
Yeah, I got that impression too, I really did.
Do you want to cut elections to give it to the library?
Some small, but, yeah, like just, if we were moving 10,000, 15,000, you know, 20,000 or something.
I want to make sure of what the need might be, I mean, it's a good, it's a good cause, Mark, I'd want to make sure we recognize what that need was.
From being in there, the library, I'll say this, my library would have preferred an increase this year, they were told to bring in a level funding, and so they did, but they, they definitely had more, they, they had an increase built in, and they were told that wasn't going to happen, so submit a level funding budget.
Do you know what the increase was, was it capital increases, or?
It was operating, it was mainly for.
Salaries or operating?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know the exact.
Yeah, I don't.
I, I do know those discussions were had, so, you know, and if it's, you know, Bill's talking, you know, he's talking low numbers, because I'm sure if you cut that part of elections, it'd be maybe 10,000 or something like that, you know, that's not much to shift around, so, I don't know what the library could do with that, if that's, again, that's what Bill was, was possibly considering, but.
Yeah, I would, I would think maybe, and, I mean, if you're at a $3,000 budget on, on legal, and you go to 15, you're probably looking pretty good, I mean, that's, that in itself's $12,000, that's a 500% increase for your legal.
Right, when you're looking from a percent standpoint, yes, it's kind of staggering, you know, that amount.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I would think that we could take the 35,000, probably reduce that to 20,000, and that's the 15,000, and again, you know, some people are going to say, well, you know, my God, you know, it's a multimillion dollar budget, and you guys are talking about, you know, 15,000, but I've always thought it makes a big difference, you know, no matter what you're doing, you have to look out for the small money, if you wouldn't even call that small money.
And you know, if.
Any change is good.
If a, an emergency arises in any of these departments.
They can come back.
They can come back for, out of contingency, which we do all year long, most of the times.
And that is more of a contingency kind of thing, like they're legal.
Right, legal is more of a contingency.
If something comes up during the election cycle, that they go to.
Right.
You know, there's, there's a questioning, or, you know.
And something else I wanted to, to look at, I'm not quite sure where we would put this in, what area we might put this in, whether it would be in promotions or something to that effect, but I've always felt, I've sent in a lot of committees to the city of Salisbury and for their National Folk Festival, and, you know, I've been seeing these for a couple of years now, and there's, it's always concerned me that Wycomico County doesn't take a great role in that event, because it's an economic driver, I think we should, I think we should demonstrate some type of partnership with, you know, the largest municipality in the county, that's actually investing, you know, millions in a program and getting sponsors from all, all throughout the county, in order to bring this event here that not only, you know, enhances the quality of life, which we always talk about, but it's an economic driver, so I would like to see the county take part in something to this effect, you know.
Yeah, I was actually going to bring that up also, I mean, it's kind of embarrassing, I sit on the World Maryland Council, we were able to move over $10,000 as a sponsorship for this, but then they're asking, well, how much does the county give? And I'm like, well, you know, at this point, nothing, but, you know, which is, at least, that's a lot of money, all things considered, but that's also not a lot of money for what that's bringing to the county, and it's a huge event and big for quality of life and.
And I would, you see, we do about a little less than 20,000 in kind with services, whether, I don't, and I'm not quite sure what that might be, maybe some assistance from the sheriff's department, planning zoning, or not planning zoning, recreation parks and tourism may, may contribute some of this, so there is some in kind, but I think even like a $10,000 contribution, you know, cash contribution, sort of to make it like a $30,000 commitment, would be something where I think it, as Josh said, I think it'd be a little more, feel a little bit more respectable as a county that's supporting one of the, you know.
John, does the city of Salisbury support our events, like the baseball events or the civic center events? I mean, do they give us cash for those, those, those events?
Uh, no, that's.
And we probably do more over a year's time, and that, and Folk Festival's a great thing, don't get me wrong, I'm not, I'm not questioning that, but, you know, if we are, if we are doing $20,000 already and in kind, you know, I don't see any cash payments coming into the civic center for any concerts or.
Well, I think, you know, in light of that, Joe, the city, the city is part of the county, the county isn't part of the city, I mean, you know, Salisbury, Salisbury isn't responsible for Willards, Salisbury isn't responsible for Sharp Town, Salisbury's responsible for Salisbury, but I think the county's obligated to be responsible for, for, you know, the entire county.
Civic center's in the city.
Oh, we do a lot of stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah, I understand, but I, anyway.
Well, where do you want the money to come from, John? That's the question.
That's, well, you know, I thought about, well, 10,000 would be, is a great, it would be a good gesture, again.
Well, you know, I noticed.
Depends on where it might, where it might, where we might recommend it be added.
I know everybody's hedging around this one, but I'll, I'll bring it up, you know, the county executive put a public information officer in, and that's something he basically campaigned against when he, when he did that, when he was running for election, what's that, 50,000, 40,000?
40.
40, yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, there's that, there's, I think, 25,000 for contractual services and 20,000 in community promotions that, as far as I'm concerned, we could, we better spend on flood control or whatever, or challenge John's contribution to the city, or.
I think flood control's our biggest issue this year.
Yeah, but you, but also, and the PIO thing's always been an issue for, since 2006, the county could desperately need one right now, not having that position is, isn't a good thing, but.
Well, it'd be a shame to have to spend $40,000 because we can't, we can't seem to cooperate.
Right, but also, I think, I think that's also.
So you want a PIO officer that write things about the council, with the council's, you know, our issues, it's being written now, good.
If you had a PIO officer, you probably wouldn't be seeing a lot of that.
Why? It would be, they would be working.
That's their job.
They would be working at the executive's office.
If they're doing their job correctly.
Well, the press releases are all negative, Bill, that's the sad part about it.
Well, you're making that assumption.
Those press releases, honestly, I think they just incite.
My main thing is, you start taking stuff from the executive budget, this whole turmoil, phew.
Well, it's not curious.
I'm looking at our budget.
Should we give him more so that the turmoil will go away?
Our budget's going up more percent wise than, isn't our budget up a lot more percent wise than the executive's budget?
I didn't do the comparison of the two budgets, I just evaluated each one individually.
Because our county budget went up substantially two years ago.
Well, we've had to, we've had to add it, we've had to add it in internal order, we've also had to take on legal expenses.
Yeah.
And, again, in 2016, we had to transfer the health benefits into individual departments.
But I don't think, like, for example, in our county budget, I see no reason that we have seven council people attend Mako, for example.
Seven council members don't attend Mako.
I think our president, our vice president, and then maybe one council member, you know, we could rotate, a general counsel, but then they can come back and report to us, you know, instead of seven people going there getting the same information. I'm just mentioning that.
Seven council members don't, I don't attend Mako, but, you know, look, I, look, if you want to do that, that's fine, but.
I'll tell you.
But part of the council expenses are, the legal department, we used to rely on the county attorney, we had to hire our own attorney, and that's, I think, a huge part of, of our expenses, and we had to get an internal auditor, because there's been so much stuff that has come up that one under position couldn't handle it with all the irregularities over the past five years, so, you know, yeah, those are expenses, but those are in direct relation to some of the actions that have been going on down the hallway, so.
I used to be so against Mako and MML until I attended my first conference, and I realized how much you learn there, how much the council members are educated, and the networking that goes on there, it's so valuable.
Well, there's nobody that dreads going to meetings any more than me, especially that, but I've gained a lot from going to Mako over the years.
Absolutely.
And it's been very educational for me, I, I don't, Henry Parker, who probably was as different a politician as I am, always stressed how important Mako was, stay involved in Mako, it's, you know, and we learn things there over the years, you just pick up in conversations or in one of the seminars, it's, I think it's been very helpful, you know, so, I, I don't go, I don't get a room, I drive back and forth, I don't, you know, I don't, I don't take advantage of that, you know, it's, it's not a long drive, 30 miles each way most of the time, I'm glad to have it on the eastern shore instead of western Maryland, that's a good thing, but, so, the Mako, I, I think that's, I think that's an important thing, I, I'd encourage anybody on the council to go to Mako.
As far as the public information officer piece there, just to bring it up, I mean, we have bad press releases because we have no professional there to do it, and it does, those do go statewide, or they do get, you know, unfortunately, we do get bad press, we get, we get a bad image because we don't have a professional there writing, and all that being said, I'm not, you know, if we felt like cutting it, okay, but, but it's important to have someone put on a good image, and especially to cover up the stuff that is now becoming, not to cover up, that's a terrible word. Strike that from the.
I heard that yesterday.
No, but you don't want to.
This is a time delayed now, remember?
You don't want to actually put it on display, and that's what, unfortunately, that's what's been happening, is so many things get thrown around in media, you better have someone understand the bigger picture and to be articulate in a way that makes sense to the broader public, but.
But they, they won't be working for the council.
Right, true, yep, so.
Well, I'd recommend 40,000 PIO, 25,000 contractual, and 20,000 for community promotion to be cut.
I'll go along with that.
To be used either cut completely or reallocated to.
What's the rationale for the community promotion?
Well, they got another.
Because there's no rationale.
They got two community promotions.
There's no rationale for community promotions in the executive's office, I mean, this is new, I mean, it's, it's slush fund to be used for no reason except, you know, the whim, whatever over there, so I don't see why we have a community promotions line item, which has all of the Mako dues, GSB dues, and then community promotions in the executive's office, it's essentially a duplicate that has no, that has no rationale for it.
What was the third thing you mentioned? You said community promotion and PIO.
And then contractual services.
What falls under that?
Exactly.
See, if we had somebody here talking to us, we'd know the answer to these questions, this is a problem, you know?
So, again, I've suggested cuts in past years, that I think I've been the lone, or maybe the only second person, you know, there's been two of us that supported them, so, but those are, those are the cuts that I recommend for, right now, and I'll bring up the airport later, because that's something I bring up every year, but it's not the most popular thing to discuss, so.
Any other comments?
I just can't justify a PIO full time, what are they going to do in an hour, eight press releases? I don't understand that.
Mark, you had said about the airport.
Well, every year, I don't like the general tax, you know, the taxpayers subsidizing the airport, every year it grows, every year I lose that battle, so, you know, you know, most years, you know, it's 200,000, last, 250 last year, we cut 50, you know, to shift around, you know, this year it's 622,000, you know, I'll make the suggestion that I do every year, that we just cut that out completely, and then I'll, I'm sure, I don't know if I'll have a majority support, but I'll put it out there to discuss, I, I think the airport should be self-sufficient, at the very least, this one should be structured as a loan, you know, the taxpayers should not be subsidized in, frankly, passenger flights, you know, people that, the folks that, that use the airport, the, you know, it's the general people of Wycomico County, it's not a core government function, like schools, roads, all that sort of stuff, and so I've always had a problem with the taxpayers of Wycomico County putting money into this, and it's a relatively recent thing, it's only happened over the past four years, I think it is, so.
What was the amount you were concerned about, Mark?
All 622,000.
Yeah, well, I'll disagree with that one.
I thought I might get some disagreement, so.
Yeah, but I mean, I mean, that might be the single biggest economic driver in our whole region, so, you know, that's just, and, and, I mean, yes, it, it would be great if it was self-sufficient, but, you know, it's pretty, it's close, but that little bit of subsidy for, you know, I mean, that's just, I mean, communities around this country would kill to have a regional airport in their, in their county.
But if, yeah, but if it's. If it's, if it's such an economic driver, though, why is it losing money? I mean, it seems that it would capture some of that economic benefit.
You can't capture, you're looking at it from what it captures there at the airport, you're not looking at what it does for all the business, I mean, you've got a lot of corporations that would not be in Wycomico County, one for the fact we have that airport, and then they employ thousands and thousands of people because they're in Wycomico County because of that airport, so, you know.
I mean, I, I mean, I agree, you know, Purdue and a lot of, you know, places have businesses out there, but, you know, Purdue pay, you know, they, they pay for those services out there, I mean, you know, look, Purdue, you know, Purdue's a pretty good business, you know, they have a lot of spillover effects in the community too, and we're not subsidizing Purdue, you know, you know, there's, i- i- if it's such a big economic driver, and if it, if it is so valued by the businesses, it seems there's something wrong with this business model then, that it requires a government subsidy.
You know, you're still missing a point, I mean, I use that airport pretty regularly, when I get on that plane, I don't know what percent, but I'm amazed how many times I sit by people that work for, particularly in this area, people don't realize how many sales reps live in our area, and they live in our area because we have an airport, we're in mid-Atlantic, we have an airport, and they can drive to an airport, me, I'm amazed the number of times I'm sitting with, like, pharmaceutical reps, you know, they're flying, industrial salespeople, I'm like, why are you, I mean, before I'd say, you know, how come you're, why do you live in Salisbury? They're like, because you have an airport, I mean, they make their living flying, you know, like thousands of people do, and a lot of them live in our area because we have an airport, you know, I mean, we could go all day about, you know, the economic benefits that the airport gives to Wycomico, and just not Wycomico, I mean, it's a, it's a regional, I mean, you know, if you live on a lower shore, that's your source, you know, you've got a source in your backyard.
I know a lot of people that drive to Baltimore just to fly out of their airport, we're losing a lot of business, because we don't have a commercial shuttle back and forth.
I agree with both of you. It is an economic driver, I served on the airport commission for a number of years, And when, when I was on there, the county didn't get any, I mean, the airport didn't get any funding from the county. And, you know, it could have been better taken care of than it was. And I don't know whether that's because they weren't getting money or it was the management. Mark, I agree with your, you know, philosophy there that, that says, you know, it should be taken care of itself. The airport did get run down over a period of time. Like I say, whether it was because there was not enough money being generated. There's been a struggle to get a second carrier in, and it's been tried several times. And some of the things that's going on out there now, I don't feel it's being, some people are being treated right. We've heard about that at the podium, the people coming in and making comments. We've got to protect that carrier that's there. And the former manager, or whatever his differences were with me or anybody else, always stressed that. And it seems like we're moving in a direction here where that's got to be addressed. And you hear rumors out here on the street where people ain't happy with what's going on. And I'll bring this up at a later date about trying to get some kind of assurances from the carrier that's there now that they don't have any issues with some of the projects that's going on out there. The airport needs rebuilding. I don't know that it all needs to be done in one year. That's my issue, you know? I would agree with cutting some of the money out of the airport budget. I really would.
And, and I will say, I don't really, I say disagree with Bill that much on this because I do recognize the economic benefit of the airport. I, what I, I mean, what my main concern is, it seems like we're heading in the wrong direction in terms of taxpayer funding for the airport. You know, it's not, doesn't seem to be a temporary thing to get the airport on its feet, anything like that. It seems to be a continuing thing that's increasing like every other, you know, government program. And there's not the incentives out there to, you know, reduce the use of government money. Instead, it's, you know, taking a leap from two hundred thousand to six hundred thousand, you know, that's, that's, it's a, you know, it's a pretty big leap. So, well, we're going to subsidize the airport. I, I get that. And I, and I get the rationale for it. I, I do. I don't like the fact that it's, every year it's more and more subsidy. I, I think that there needs to be a plan to have this be a temporary and to phase out, which we don't have right now. It's just, they, they need money and the, the checkbook's wide open. And that, that bothers me, but.
They literally did have the lights go out on the runway last month. I mean, that, that, put into perspective, that's pretty damning if, if some, you know, if, if other groups found out or, you know, if that becomes the, the larger narrative, I think we, we have a larger responsibility in having what we have here. That we need to invest in it and do so now while the federal government has money to, to put forward just to match what we can do or to.
Yeah, my, my preference would be, I mean, I have, you know, I prefer to see us like, express that concern as part of, as part of this budget process and kind of send a message that, eh, next year you got to do, you got to do better than this, or, you know, it's just not a given. But I'd have an issue cutting it this year.
I mean, and that's, and that's fair. We, we tried to say that last year. And this year we get money tripled in the bank. I'm saying, you know, so I, look, if, if there's a way that that can be done, and again, I won't be here, so, you know, that's the fight I won't fight. But it would be great if, if that message could be sent and they would get the message. Because, you know, last year, you know, we, we did trim it back some, you know, and Sid had the same sort of conversations and they were actually here for this. And, you know, Wayne, you know, expressed he understood. And then this year, it's, you know, three times as much money, so if you can make it stick, that'd be great.
Yeah, I.
For the airport.
Go ahead, Art. Go ahead, Eric. Use your mic.
New manager come in, I mean, you're discussing bringing in a new airline, bringing in a maintenance company, new hangars for the private citizens that store airplanes and commercial airplanes that are local, like Bill said, that, that use the airport for that. That was a big thing. And then all of a sudden it died out. And now we're talking about drones. I mean, you talk, we, we know that the airport's a big asset. And what she came in with, what I look at was been the part that would boost the airport and got it going. But then all of a sudden it fizzed out. We heard nothing else about that. Now they're beating the drones to death. How much of economic impact is that going to do for the airport and for the economy? I figured that when she came in with the, the company that's going through the maintenance and all that, that was, you know, that got us all roused up and was all ready for it. But then all of a sudden it just died out.
I think everything's still on the table. I mean, Dawn has about five or six balls in the air.
I could say, yeah, that lease for the maintenance company is actually, she just talked about that.
And, and everything's still working. It's just that a lot of times when you don't hear about something, most times it's that we're waiting for the FAA to make, because everything, you know, half, ninety percent it seems of what we try to do at the airport has to go through FAA regulations, et cetera. And that's really the holdup. A lot of the reasons we just postponed, um, a.
Drones.
An item in yesterday's agenda was because we wanted to make sure that FAA was in line with the airport before we made any more changes. So that's, that's a lot of it, I think.
It's just like the second carrier thing, you know, I mean, everybody wants that, but that's, and Joe can attest to that serving on the commission. But it's not, that's just not on our end. You got to have like, you know, you want to have it at BWI, but then you got to have.
The other.
You got to, you know, their end, they got to have the.
Terminal.
The terminal and the space and provide you that. And, you know, yeah, that's just a very complex, it's easier said than done.
Well, you know, they keep bringing this drone issue up and how much money it's going to make. The same company's doing the same thing they're trying to do at Salisbury and Akamak County. So, you know, that's my understanding that they're aggressing in Akamak County the same way they are here. So any of this business that's going on here, half of that will be there. It's not like it's going to be, Salisbury's going to be the one.
I don't know if we can make that assumption, Joe. I mean, we are, you know, with our, with our proximity to Washington DC, et cetera, I think we got a lot of opportunities just here alone and.
Akamak's closer to Washington than we are.
You, you could have.
By, by flight.
But you could have, I mean, you have a McDonald's on, you know, you have sixteen different McDonald's in one town because there's a need for it. And I think that the drone industry is, is increasing by leaps and bounds.
I'm not arguing the drone industry isn't, but I'm, I'm just saying, you know, to think that we're going to be the only game in town, I think is far-fetched, you know, for that.
Well, it's, it's, I don't think she's saying it's the only, only game in town. She's just saying she'd like us to be able to be part of it, part of it. So, and, and Mark, you know, I understand your, your sense of responsibility, fiscal responsibility. That's, that's excellent. Um, my perspective on the airport has always been.
And your perspective.
You all know my perspective. We're dealing with years, years, millions of dollars of, of deferred maintenance at the airport. I mean, we're lucky at six hundred because, and as a matter of fact, I'm sure the number could be twice that. Because not only are we doing.
Give me ideas, Joe.
Yeah. Not only are we working with, you know, addressing deferred maintenance, but we have someone who's actually has the foresight to recognize what needs to be done in, you know, for future progress. So, you know, she's trying, you know, in my impression, Dawn is trying to, you know, you know, fix what's, what's already been left behind us. And she's trying to turn this stone into a, to a gem. And at the same time, she's trying to move that even further forward in the program. So there's both ends of these we're trying to do catch up on.
Well, I, I'm going to go a little further here on this because this, this really kind of gets under my skin a little bit. You know, when this drone thing first came along, we started questioning, you know, I Googled it. And that came up about the drone detector. And so I ended up calling FAA and talking to the people there. Well, I, we were told at this table that they had no, basically no oversight on any of that. Well, now that's what's holding it up because they do. So how much of that's going on? You know, how much of this stuff, you know, is really going on? Is it not being held up because of the FAA right now?
Well, you made a good point. I, again, I try not to micromanage the actual events that are going on. To me, I would say, hey, if you're telling me you need, you know, six hundred thousand for something, you say it's going to work, I'm going to take that leap of faith and we'll say, okay, and let's see what happens with this. I don't think, the one thing, Joe, is that if, if this drone issue does not come to fruition, the money, it's not as if the money has, is, is going to be spent. I mean, there's going to still be, I think there's still going to be assets there regardless.
I understand the asset part of it. And, and I hope the drone project does come to fruit, fructus. Boo, boy, that's a word. But all this has to be done right. And just throwing money at it just to make it right when apparently it wasn't followed up on correctly, isn't the way to go.
I, I, I say, I don't think we're throwing money at anything. I think we've been given a budget, a, a figure as to what she thinks she needs to make it happen. And she's going to do everything she can to make it happen. If you don't fund it, you know it's not going to happen. That's my concern.
It's kind of like building it and they'll come?
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, there's a lot of boondoggles around the country that government officials said that. But the path should be towards self-sufficiency. But, look, I get what you're saying. There may not, look, I don't think there's majority support to cut six hundred thousand from the airport budget. So I'm throwing that out there. I made my point. I'm happy to move on to cuts we can agree on. And I think, was it fifteen thousand from elections, forty thousand from the PIO? Seemed to have general, I think, I don't know, it seemed to be general agreement. And I, I still would like the twenty-five thousand from contractual services and, and twenty thousand from community promotions, but.
Hey, you left out the contribution of ten thousand to the city of Salisbury.
I'm talking cuts, John. I only talk cuts. You, you talk spending.
Doesn't that have to go somewhere? Doesn't, don't we have to make a recommendation?
John, I'm, John, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to save the taxpayers' money here, man. If you want to spend it afterwards, that's. That's a, there's two steps, man. You got to find the money from somewhere.
Yeah, well, John, for your.
What's your last day anyway? I just.
Your, your community pro- promotion, I mean, that should be part of that, twenty thousand, ten thousand.
Well, that's true. But we know that money's not going to the city of Salisbury. We know that's not going to happen. Well, I may have to leave that one, fellas.
Look, that was, um, it's eighty-five, it's, it's an even hundred thousand, it looks like, in cuts.
It's a hundred thousand.
Forty?
That's a hundred total. Forty, twenty-five, twenty, and then fifteen. The fifteen is the board of elections.
So, we could, we could either just cut that or, you know, there's.
That's slaying this budget, you know?
I mean, I'd be, I'd be willing to do some kind of compromise on that executive budget. I mean, I'm not, I mean, I give my rationale to PIO. But if we gave in on that, yeah, I've got a little concerns just hitting, hitting all three of those.
I don't remember what was all in the community promotions piece, but I remember when he was talking about it, like, oh, that sounds great. Terrible title, but that sounds great.
Sounds great.
I'll ask them, while they're here, Executive's Office, what do you think?
You know, the biggest thing, the biggest thing I hear, you know, I was just looking at the independent, the newspaper last night. And of course, there's a lot of comments going on about, from what Bill said. When this county executive's office was formed, everybody's worried about is how it's going to grow. And. And it has, you know? And they got two staff members at desk out there, seem to be doing a good job. And there's not that many press releases. I mean, I don't think there's anything to keep somebody busy full-time doing press releases.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and, and this, the PIO position isn't getting rid of someone who's already there.
No.
Like, like I said, there's the two staff members and I think they both, you know, look, Lisa's, you know, I mean, you know, we, we hear from her a lot. She's great, you know, and so.
They both do a great job.
So, it's not about having anyone lose their job.
Well, it's, with a hundred thousand being the total, I'm, I would not be the one to suggest that we, that we spend. So we've got a hundred thousand in cuts. Is that how we're going to leave it? Or is there anyone that, Mark, is there anywhere that you would like to see it added?
You know, if, if, if we are to add, I prefer, you know, I'll, I'll go along with your ten thousand for the Salisbury, you know, for the Folk Festival. You know, if we do spend it. But it would be nice to have roads, have some for flood, you know, from drain, drainage flood issues too. I mean, Dallas hinted that he could use that. They're, they're using the money we gave him last year that we cut and reapplied.
Well, if that just started to dissolve with the library. Right, and you had to agree to the library.
And, and the library, fifteen thousand, Bill.
Well, we can't add to anything.
No, we can't.
Yeah, we need to make that recommendation.
Would it be better just to put it in contingency and, and, and let the folks that needed plead their case? I mean, say no better about what they need than we do.
Well, that's theoretically, or technically, that was supposed to happen.
Yeah, yeah, real. I mean, we suggest.
And we can just suggest, right.
Exactly.
It doesn't hurt for us to, you know, suggest. Our suggestions are like library, roads and.
Fifteen to library, ten to Folk Festival, seventy-five roads? Or what, what were you thinking, Bill? Or, sorry?
Also pop in and say, we haven't really spoken much or said anything about, I, I know this is an issue, this is a larger issue. But Warwick, we know how bad, how woefully underfunded we give money to them. That is a, is an area I don't, I mean, I don't know specifically. I wouldn't even know where to start as far as where would be the most helpful for them because they are dramatically underfunded for any other, um, community college.
How much underfunded do you think, Josh?
Oh, it was ridiculous. It was like twenty-seven percent, like compared, yeah, it was.
Let's, let's do like a hundred out of the airport and put that in.
Well, you know, we tried that with Warwick last year, Josh. It's, you have three counties involved with Warwick.
Yeah, that messes things up, yeah.
I'm sorry, two.
You have to get a percentage.
That may mess up, we, we have to be, we have to work with Worcester County on that.
Any increases that we, that we suggest have to be matched to a certain degree by Warwick, by Worcester County.
How would that work if we just did a one-time funding thing like we did with Board of Ed?
We could possibly do it on a capital. I don't, I do not know.
Maybe if it was like an encouragement, you know, I, I guess, I guess my, I'm, I'm only saying that the, in the future, we know the lower three counties especially need to do more when it comes to Warwick supporting what we're getting out of them already.
To be fair, I mean, Warwick is getting a three hundred thousand dollar increase in this budget. Over three hundred thousand dollars increase.
Was that for the capital plan?
No, just total, operating. So from five, from five, five point six million to five point seven four, you know, so it's, I mean, I mean, Dr. Roy gets, has always got an increase in this budget. We, we trimmed his increase last year a little bit to keep in line with, with Worcester County. But he, he is getting more money this year. So if we want to do a one-time thing, you know, take it from the airport, I'm not opposed to that. I'm just saying, we, we do need to be careful with Worcester County. We got to, it was a big issue last year, but then.
That's right.
Perhaps a one-time thing might, might solve that problem, but that, that needs to be discussed.
That could be done.
So Rhodes was mentioned as well. Is there, I mean, this is, you know, Rhodes is also, we honestly, we're not talking about a lot of money when you're.
No.
Based on their entire budget, but Rhodes had been mentioned. Any, any suggestions or any? No.
Well, let me say this. For those council people that weren't here for all this before, this, um, this process is, I don't know, you call it easier or whatever than it was when revenues were declining. Do you remember that, Bill?
Oh, yeah.
You know, so it's hard to, Bill was here before, you know?
Well, one thing we haven't discussed is the possible decline of revenues next year and the year after.
And that, and that bothers.
We discussed that next year.
Minimum wage.
Yeah, it kept doing the politicians.
I don't want to wait till next year to discuss it.
That's one of the things that really bothers me about the airport issue, you know, when, when, when you, you move something up as much as they moved it up this year, next year, and if you can't fund it, they're saying, oh, you're cutting the airport, you're cutting the airport, you know? I mean, that's a big increase. That's a big increase.
So, a- as I have it here, we've got a hundred in cuts. It's been suggested fifteen for the library, ten as far as the Folk Festival. And a possible one-time, I heard, I heard one other person. And, and Warwick there was sort of a question mark as far as one-time capital.
I, I'll just forewarn you on one thing. I mean, you know, this is going to create more significant negative publicity because, you know, the thing that we hammered was the executive's budget.
We recognize that, Bill.
And I'm just, you know, I'm just throwing that out there, but that's the.
It's a hefty budget.
Yeah.
Well, if it's not this, it'll be something else.
My, my only point to that is if you, if you cut that PIO like forty, I don't, I don't think that would not cause much flack. Like, so that's not a position, it's not a, a, so then you kind of, but I think throwing the other two items on top of that, then it becomes, it's just, it's going to come across as the council went after the executive's budget. I mean, that is what's, that's how it's going to come across.
Why do we always have to cave?
I don't know that. We're not caving, Larry. It's not, what we're caving on, the people that'll say that.
You said not to cut his budget. We're, we're here to represent the people.
We're not cutting our budget.
But our budget is nothing compared to that one.
Well, we can. Well, percent wise.
Don't even look at that.
I, I mean, it, it's, would it be better spent, I mean, library, National Folk Festival, and drainage issue on roads? I mean, is that, those seem like more important priorities.
I'm not necessarily arguing, I'm just. That is, you know.
You're a hundred percent right. The perception's going to be there.
Right, right. Exactly. That's what I'm just saying. Right, right. That's the way it's going to come across.
I mean, but again, we could, we could not spend the money, which is my preferred thing, and, you know, we'd be cut, which I like. But, you know, look, the library has been, you know, they, they have definite needs. You know, John's made a persuasive case for the Folk Festival. And drainage issues, again, that's something I hear every, not, I mean, almost every single day about drainage issues. So if I'm up in Mardella Springs, you know, you go to Dave Kenny's hardware store, every single person has a complaint about the roads, so.
I've got multiple people calling.
We got that Tuesdays.
Well, yeah, so.
You got that Tuesdays.
So, um, it, it, you're right, Bill. You're right. Well, yeah, so, so, it, it, you're right, Bill, you're right, but, you know, I think our response is, it's not punitive, it's that there are higher priorities that, that we saw, so.
Exactly.
Well, why don't we do this, you know, we're looking at the 15 to 10, that leaves us additional 75 that we're sort of discussing. We don't have much information on Warwick, but the additional 75, we could just do that for Rhodes and leave it, and, and let it be. They can spend it or they won't.
Drainage, yeah.
With drainage or however it might be.
That's where it needs to go.
They used the money from last year for that, so.
Okay, all right. Should we pursue, should we ask Ms. Hurley to pursue any of the options with Warwick Community College? If you could, talk to Ray Hoy and see what, what, what needs there might be in that direction, 'cause I agree with Josh.
You think he's gonna turn down that, John?
I understand. The question is, how are we going to, how, how would we do that without impacting Worcester County?
John?
What, how much, and where do you want the money?
I'm talking about part of the 75.
Oh, so you're gonna take it out of Rhodes and give it to-
Well, I'm giving it to Rhodes yet, it's the 75, we're trying to figure out what to do with it, right?
Well, how, how about that, John, from, how about the airport?
Let's do the airport, let's, let's do 100 from the airport.
There's 600,000 you got to play with there, John.
I say, I, I, I appreciate what, I appreciate what you're saying, no, it's, whether I were, whether, whether I were or not, I, I don't want, I really do not want to deal with anything with the airport in reference to cuts, I think it's too important.
Is she gonna be able to spend that money? Remember what Wayne said about Rhodes, if we give more money, they can't spend it. Is she gonna be able to spend that money?
I'm going by what's been requested, and I'm gonna try to stick true to what's been requested. I think that's-
She has anybody, no, yeah. I think that's- And Mark said it earlier, we're, we're somewhat in consensus on these other things, and that, that one we're not.
Yeah, yeah, that, that, I think maybe that's-
Just let that one go.
So, no to Warwick?
No, that wasn't stated, I didn't, I don't think-
The only question at Warwick's just, is there a one-time, is there something from a, that would be eligible for one-time funding that he might have, that he might have a need for?
Do you want me to give him a dollar amount?
No.
No, just ask if it's possible.
Don't act a dollar.
If, if this is all we've got to split up, I, I would, Josh, I appreciate that, but I, I mean, if this is all we got to split up, I wouldn't even go there, I don't see any need to go there.
Warwick's getting 300,000 extra, they're, they're not being neglected in the budget, so.
Okay, so we'll put it in Rhodes.
75, okay, so 10 to the city, 75 to Rhodes, 15 to library.
That's it.
Okay.
Josh, what now?
Just, just the way I said. I know, we don't wanna talk about Sheriff's Office, but if we did, we've got new positions that have been brought up, and, and, you know, they're, I know their sworn salaries have gone up 950,000 in four years, that's a lot of money. Just throwing that out there as anything, if you feel like there's any trimming the fat or anything that we need to pay extra attention to, or if there's other expenses elsewhere, but I'm just throwing that out there. I have no suggestions and no strong feeling, you guys know that, 'cause you've been around longer, but.
I didn't hear what you said, which department are you talking about?
Sheriff's.
Sheriff's Department.
We'll call Mike and have him come talk to you.
Collective bargaining, collective bargaining added a lot to their budget.
Sure.
That's what the majority of that increase is, and, you know, you'd like to be able to say, well, you know, if you're gonna have, you know, if you're gonna add so much into salaries and operations, maybe, you know, you should bring, take away some of it from capital or something to balance it, but you're not in that position where you're really able to do that. And in the discussion we had the other day, they talked about 200,000 miles on the vehicles and et cetera, so, you know, it's, for the most part, it, that was the agreement that was made a few years back with collective bargaining, we knew these, these additional costs were gonna be coming.
And they've made great reductions, I didn't see, I didn't note that throughout the rest of it, over the last couple of years.
Yeah, but along, but I think along those lines, I think we should have a work session in upcoming here soon on fund for, on fund forfeitures.
Oh, forfeiture funds?
Going back to the sheriffs through the district attorney, well, we-
We did, we never came to any conclusion, but you're right.
Yeah, yeah, it didn't really get-
Definitely.
Yeah, yeah, right, we did not get deep enough into that, just sort of got-
And they're open to it, I mean, you know, the captain was open to it, the sheriff's open to it, yeah.
Do you want a follow-up work session to that?
I think we need a follow-up, and I don't, but I don't think it necessarily needs to be, it doesn't need to be with them. That needs to be, well, we need the, Jamie Dykes here for that.
Yeah, and the judges.
She releases those funds, and that's a Wayne, that's, that's a, that's a Wayne and Jamie discussion.
Well, I, I think it's even a Jimmy Sarbanes, he, he, isn't he the, the head judge, isn't he?
Chief judge.
Chief judge, yeah, so I, it's also him, 'cause it's the way the judges release the, you know, the way they do, so.
And they're just kind of doing it just because, well, that's the way it's always sort of been done, but, you know, you read the charter, Taylor shouldn't have to go into the county's general fund.
Well, it's a state law, too.
It should be going to the general fund.
Probably a work session's a good idea, I'm not just standing in the ladder.
I'm just not sure we're following-
Yeah, no, Bill's 100% right on that.
Well, we've sent them, Bill, I think, I think it was when you were on the council last time, with Joe, that we did send a, a letter to the judiciary saying, there are inconsistencies here, because at one time, we received, I think, six different resolutions, and the reading of the, what the judge had signed were all different as far as where the funds were being authorized to be transferred to.
Well, the problem-
But I don't know if anything was, has followed from that.
But that's the problem, is, we, I mean, this company, I brought this up multiple years, and we always get, oh, yeah, we'll deal with it, and the next year, same thing. I mean, there's always, you know, oh, you know, we recognize the problem, but nothing ever happens, so I, I think, I think Bill's probably right, I mean, having a work session to hammer this out and come to a, some sort of conclusion would be an excellent idea, so.
I'll put it on our pending list.
Okay, and I would suggest, too, sending a letter again, and sending it to, to Judge Sarbanes, and saying, here is what the concerns are, do you think this is something you may be able to address independently, or should we have a work session? Would you wanna have a work session with the council on this?
You don't need to include the state's attorney about that.
Yeah.
And copy the state's attorney, yeah.
That's actually, that's who is actually releasing the funds.
'Cause she's the one transferring the funds, the state's attorney.
Bob Taylor, is it, is it more of the authority of the state's attorney, or the circuit court, or the judge?
Well, I think it's probably the court should do it, it should be arranged with the judges. Is there any need to contact the district?
District court doesn't have it.
Well, those court orders are, you know, prepared by the state's, the attorneys in the state's attorney's office.
Are they all circuit court or any district court?
They're circuit court.
Well, I think it makes sense, the state's attorney and the-
And the state's attorney, sounds good. Okay, we can do that?
Yes. Because Keith just told me Bob does not have a microphone.
Oh, okay.
He took that with him.
Okay, any other discussions?
Yes.
All right, um, yes.
I did invite Mr. Taylor here because he has talked about budget conditions regarding department heads that have not been confirmed, so this is a great opportunity to talk about that, and the council would like to do that.
Well, let me, let me start first by talking just generally about conditions on the budget. And you may wonder, if you look in the charter, there's nothing about putting conditions on the budget. So, you might say initially, well, why can we do this? How can they be effective? Well, the answer to that is that state law, and I'm talking about court-made law, the Court of Appeals, has ruled that where you have the ability to cut items from the budget, either reduce them or remove them, you have the inherent power to condition how the appropriation money is spent. Now, there are certain limits to that, it has to relate directly to the money that's being appropriated, and by that I mean it can't be legislation in disguise, and it has to be confined to the particular fiscal year, which of course, in the budget, they would be by definition confined to the fiscal year. So, you have, you have a pretty broad ability, it's not limited in subject, there can be some general limitations, for example, it would probably be improper to put a condition on the amount that's required for maintenance of effort for the Board of Education's budget, the MOE part. You, you could conceivably, and there's some law to this effect, actually condition anything that would be above MOE. To give you some examples of what has happened, and the actual key case in Maryland was decided about 40 years ago, when the General Assembly put a condition on the use of funds for abortion. And if you can remember at the time, I can, I know somebody may not, a few of you may not be able to remember, remember that far back, it was in the late 70s, that went up on appeal, there was a lot of publicity at the time, there was, of course, a group that organized and challenged the limit. And that's when the Court of Appeals really gave its definitive ruling, that if you have the power to cut appropriations, you can put these conditions on how they're spent, and it upheld the limitation on abortion. There have been other rulings, in fact, just a few years before that, there was a case involving Prince George's County's funding.
Well, if you any further, I mean, but's that trumped your county charter?
Yeah, yeah, this is an inherent power. Yeah, the charter doesn't prohibit this, incidentally, it just doesn't expressly prohibit-
And how is this any different than what we just decided on?
I don't know, I don't know what you just decided on, Bill, you-
Bob, you're sitting right here, we just-
Well, you're talking about shifting, shifting money around in the budget?
Yeah, we're not just shifting, but we can-
Well, that's a different, that's a little different matter, that's shifting from one-
Bob's talking about putting a, Bob's talking about putting a condition, he's talking about putting a condition on spending as opposed to cutting, funding.
Yeah, for example, the Prince George's County case, they gave money to the fire departments, and they put certain limitations on how they could be spent for certain equipment. That would be an example. They weren't moving money, for example, from the fire departments to the police department.
Did you say they?
The county government.
Right.
In Prince George's County.
Right, but when you have an executive forum and a county council, then who's, who's they?
I believe in that case, I think in that case, it was the Prince George's County Council, but I'm not sure, I don't think that's a significant difference.
I think it is.
Well, I don't believe it is, because there's a case, it's not a case, it's an Attorney General's opinion that does involve Hartford County, and it was under their charter form of government with the county executive, and it essentially approved limitations on the expenditure of funds. This was for the Board of Education, and it was above MOE. So, in any event, there's good precedent in terms of conditions, it's pretty wide open, as long as you avoid what they call the legislation in disguise aspect of it. And I can give you a couple of examples of cases that have run afoul of that. These were both state cases in the state budget, but it would apply across the board to the counties as well. Several years ago, there was an appropriation to what was then called the Department of Research and Development, that's a state department that apparently, I don't know if exists anymore, but it did then, and they had a pier on Solomon's Island that they used for their research work, and the condition in the budget was that that had to be open to the public, and that was held not to be a valid condition on the expenditure. So, you have situations, there's another one, also state, where they appropriated money for a state office building, and as part of the appropriation, they put on a condition that the state had to sell a farm that was located five miles away and had nothing to do with the state office building. In other words, they couldn't get the money unless they sold the farm, and that was held to be invalid, that would be essentially what they call legislation in disguise. So, that's, that's kind of an overview of these budget conditions that can be imposed. Now, in terms of what I was asked to do, and that you could, if you wanted to extend it and do other conditions, fine, we can talk about that, too, but the ones that I, what I've been asked to do pertains to the situation we have now, where the county executive is essentially not sending appointments over as, as required by the charter, both for permanent department heads, and also, as I understand it, in the past, it's also applied to acting department heads, we just simply have not known when they were appointed, and in some cases, apparently, it's gone on for quite a while. So, what I've done is I've drafted a proposed condition that would address both of those situations, the permanent department heads and other, not just the department heads, but other positions that have to be appointed, there are some others, of course, right now, most of them have been appointed, including the ones earlier this week and a little earlier this year, there's a couple that haven't, but most of them have. And I, it's, it's to address the situation of what happens if that continues, either the two that still remain to be addressed, or if any of the current department heads leave for any reason, what would be the situation with their successor, either on an acting basis or on a permanent basis. And what it, what it provides is that as far as a permanent appointment is concerned, or somebody who's serving not as an acting, but as a permanent department head or in another position, that they couldn't, there would be no appropriation use of the funds unless they've been approved, confirmed by the council, or confirmed in accordance with the charter. It can either be confirmed by the council, or if the council takes no action after it